I'd like to call the November 2014 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will start with an invocation. Ms. Etheridge?
Good evening. Think of your problems as potential teachers. Most people would agree that one of the greatest sources of stress in our lives is our problems. To a certain degree, this is true. A more accurate assessment, however, is that the amount of stress we feel has more to do with how we relate to our problems than it does with the problems themselves. In other words, how much of a problem do we make our problems? Do we see them as emergencies or as potential teachers? Problems come in many shapes, sizes, and degrees of seriousness, but all have one thing in common: they present us with something that we wish were different. The more we struggle with our problems and the more we want them to go away, the worse they seem and the more stress that they can cause. Ironically and luckily, the opposite is also true. When we accept our problems as an inevitable part of life, when we look at them as potential teachers, it's as if a weight has been lifted off of our shoulders. Think of a problem that you have struggled with for quite some time. How have you dealt with this problem up until now? If you're like most, you've probably struggled with it mentally, rehearsed it, analyzed it again and again, but have come up short. Where has all this struggle led you? Probably to even more confusion and stress. Now think of the same problem in a new way. Rather than push away the problem and resist it, try to embrace it. Mentally, hold the problem near to your heart. Ask yourself what valuable lesson this problem might be able to teach you. Could it be teaching you to be more careful or more patient? Does it have anything to do with greed, envy, carelessness, or forgiveness? Or something equally powerful? Whatever problems you're dealing with, chances are they could be thought of in a softer way that includes a genuine desire to learn from them. When you hold your problems in this light, they soften like a clenched fist that is opening. Give this strategy a try, and I think you'll agree that most problems aren't the emergencies that we think they are. And usually, once we learn what we need to learn, they begin to go away. Thank you very much.
Could we now have a moment of silence? And please keep in mind those who are far less fortunate than we are. Thank you. Now, Principal Dawn Belangia from Central Elementary School will introduce the student who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Tonight, I am happy to welcome Mr. Byron Brinkley. He's a third grader at Central Elementary, and he'll be leading us in the pledge.
Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Byron. Okay, the school spotlight this month is on Central. And once again, Principal Dawn Belangia.
Thank you. We're going to take the opportunity tonight. Mr. Baldwin's going to help me out in just a minute. We've got a short video to show you guys. We had the opportunity in June to take a group of teachers and administrators. Ms. Lasher from Griggs also went, and we did some training for about a week on action-based learning. We spent a lot of time doing a lot of activities, and I told them I was going to have you guys do some of those activities, like our Tony Chestnut when you're dancing and moving, but I'll hold off on that tonight. But one of the things we learned is seventeen minutes and you're done. So seventeen minutes, and then you need to be up and moving and doing some kind of activity to reactivate and refocus that brain. So we've been exploring different things. At the beginning of the year, we started with a K-2 lab. And in our K-2 lab, you'll see that on the video, there's more floor exercises and different things with balls and movement. But we've been fortunate enough through our PEP grant, the last of our PEP grant, to be able to put in a lab which has equipment that students will be able to go in and use. Ms. Jennifer Barnes, one of our Title I teachers, attended the training, and she'll kind of be overseeing it. Where should we able to take kids in, kids who are having issues focusing, or we're just trying to learn a concept? And you're going to learn better when you're moving and you're active. So there's equipment, there's desks that have pedals, you'll see those. There's treadmills, there's equipment that you use your hands to move, and at the same time, it's like an elliptical on the bottom. There are all kinds of different things. There's a piece of equipment that looks like a surfboard. The kids stand on it, and it kind of moves around. But it gives them that action and that movement that helps make those brain cells grow and strengthen and helps them focus. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Baldwin, so he can talk to you a little bit about what the kids are doing.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is, we're very, very excited to have this equipment here with us. And one of the big pieces, Ms. Belangia took my notes.
Oh.
To share with it is the movement is actually linked to actual strategies in the classroom. So it is built to help reinforce the brain for learning ABCs and 1-2-3s. So we will start. And this is actually one of our stations. This is the visual motor development. So we have colors and shapes, and so the kids will work a station, and they will trace them with their left hand, trace with their right. They can say the shape, they can say the color. This is part of the K-2 ABL lab. There are six stations that are tied to this, and each station is built on different activities that reinforce the skills that are needed to read left to right, for tracking, for grouping, pairing, and that standpoint. So what we try to do with this video is just quickly show you the stations, what the kids are doing. This is probably one of the first times the kids are actually in the lab. We're kind of using this as a baseline, so we can measure and track, because at the end of a nine-week period, we want to see them improving, just like we want to see them improving in their reading and writing and math and science and social studies in the classroom. So that's the visual motor tracking. The next one is the visual tracking with the balls. Helps with learning, reading left to right, right to left. The spinning helps for balance, patterns. This is the bilateral movement. Kids removing left, left arm, right leg. We want that alternate bilateral movement. When we do that, that is all about the tracking, the tracing, being able to use patterns, ultimately working the left brain with the right brain together as one. This is the 3-5 lab. So this is the lab with the exercise equipment with the same concept, but just for older kids. We will be doing activities. This is just a hand slap game where we were doing our multiples of threes, fives, sevens, and nines, and it's cross lateralization. So they're crossing over, and each time, they are alternating three, six, nine, twelve. And that was something stationary. We're doing the same things with the kids here, using their equipment. So while one person is on the equipment, they're seeing their timetables, they could be spelling their spelling words, they may have sight words that they're using that we could be using, sharing from that standpoint. And as I pan over, didn't see that one. This one is our rolling. This is pencil log roll, and with this one. The goal is to be able to roll in a straight line. With them rolling in a straight line, this helps placing words on a page and letters and words on a page together. So these are simple movements that help develop the brain in order so it can learn. One of the sayings that we were taught was that exercise grows brain cells. The more brain cells we grow, then the more we can learn. And then there's a whole neurological aspect of it that I will, I won't share it with you tonight, but we do invite you at any time to come to either Central Griggs to see this in action. It is our intention, our hope, that we work our teachers and their classes into these two rooms up to three times a week. The maximum time for our K-2 labs, like this lab, they can be in there up to twenty minutes, anywhere from ten to twenty minutes. And our Brain Body Adventure Lab, that would be more thirty minutes, because the teachers can actually come in and use it as a review. So for example, if they were given a spelling test, or a math test, or any type of test before, they could bring the kids in, work them through the exercise as a reinforcement review, and then go back. Research says that getting the kids up and moving before taking a test, they will score better. So we have some great enthusiasm with our teachers in using this. This is dicing on the cake. The teachers that attended the conference actually got classroom strategies that can be incorporated into their regular daily lesson plans, and we have majority of those teachers utilizing that. So we are very excited to see this happening. Kids are loving it. It's just being able to structure the time to get everybody in at a good point. All right? Do you guys have any questions?
I will announce later on, we will be visiting Griggs, so hopefully, you know, we'll see it there. Let's see.
December tenth.
December tenth.
December tenth.
So we'll be there.
All right. We'll make that a date. All right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next, the November sixth work session update. Today, we received information on the Minister's Council for Education. Alicia Mazel is going to head up that effort for the county. Graduation date for Currituck County High School has been set for June 12th, outside preferably, but if it rains, we're going to have backup plans. Had a senior privilege request from Principal Renee Doughty, and the board allowed that to happen. They will have those students that have a 3.5 average, and what was the other?
No, no.
No office referrals.
No office referrals. That's it. 3.5 average and office referrals can take a lunch off-campus.
Tuesday through Friday.
Can do a lunchtime. Tuesday through Friday.
Tuesday through Friday.
Okay, next, we're going to schedule.
Starting in January, by the way.
Yeah, starting at semester break.
Yeah.
Okay, then we asked Superintendent Osmond to look for a date in the future when we can meet with parents over at Knott's Island about middle school students and what they would like, whether they want us to move them back to Currituck Middle School or leave them at Moyac Middle School. So we will be meeting with them, and there will be plenty of notice to the parents of Knott's Island. Then we had the first reading of policy 6125, administering medicines to students. Then we had the second reading of two different policies. Then December 10th, starting at 11 o'clock, we're going to visit Jarvisburg Elementary, Griggs Elementary, and Shawboro Elementary. We also talked about scheduling a meeting with the director of the Board of Elections and the members of the Board of Elections to try to decide what we can do maybe in the future as far as having the elections in the schools and see if there are any options other than that. Next, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion at second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, I'm going to group the next three items because of recognition of employees. We're going to have recognition of the 2014-2015 Teacher Assistance of the Year, Teachers of the Year, and the 2014-15 Principal of the Year. Ms. Kinzel.
Good evening. Dr. Dobney, members of the board, Superintendent Osmond. This is an annual event that we come before the board to recognize our Teacher of the Year, Teacher Assistance of the Year, and our Principals of the Year. Not that they haven't been recognized at this point. We selected them in the springtime, and we take this opportunity very close to the American Education Week to honor them. American Education Week this year falls November 16th through the 22nd, and it's an opportunity for everyone in our country and in our county to celebrate public education and honor the individuals who are making a difference and ensuring that all... Oops. Hello. How are you?
I won't start again. But American Education Week is an opportunity for us to celebrate public education and honor the individuals who are making a difference and ensuring that every child receives a quality education, and that is certainly happening here in Currituck County schools. In celebration of the American Education Week, we do choose to honor our 2014-15 Teachers of the Year, Teacher Assistance of the Year, and Principal of the Year by presenting them with plaques, and our district winners will receive a monetary award. So with that, I'd like to have the board come forward so that we can call out the names of our honorees this evening, and you can help us present them with their plaques and awards. I'm going to begin with the Teacher Assistance of the Year, and we'll start, we'll go by school, starting with Currituck County High School's Teacher Assistant of the Year, Beth From the JP Napp Early College, Ms. Denise Kirkbride. From Currituck County Middle School, Ms. Kim Wilson. All right. From Moyac Middle School, Ms. Jody Sikorski. From, let's see, Knott's Island Elementary School, Ms. Heather Garner. Moyac Elementary School, Ms. Leslie Short. From Shawboro Elementary School and representing our district is Ms. Cheryl Demo. From Central Elementary School, Amy Baker. From Dr. WT Griggs Elementary, Ms. Nicole Derby. Ms. Demo, come on back up. We have pictures to take. And finally, from Jarvisburg Elementary School, Ms. Brenda Cobb. There you go. Congratulations. Okay, our Teachers of the Year, we'll get them coming up. From Currituck County High School, Ms. Joanna Bloom. From JP Napp Early College, Ms. Rhonda Britton. From Currituck County Middle School, Ms. Cindy Walker. From Moyac Middle School, Ms. Julie West. From Knott's Island Elementary School, Mr. Jim Wright. From Moyac Elementary School, Ms. Ashley Wilson. From Shawboro Elementary School, Ms. Lacy Schuler-Acano. It's taken me two years, but I got it. From Central Elementary School, Ms. Kathleen Stadler. And last, but certainly not least, from Jarvisburg Elementary School and our district's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Iris Meekins. All right. Very good. Now, if we can get that, get yourself situated here, and we'll get there. Finally? Well, I got it. I got it. They're just getting a little crowded back here. Also, we've recognized our Principals of the Year from our last meeting, but we also want to recognize our Principal of the Year with their plaque. I'm sorry? Did I miss one? I sure did. I did. Again, not last but not least, but Emily Forehand from Griggs Elementary School. How can you make a mistake? You've got too many people helping. Last but not least, we will go with our Principal of the Year, who we recognized last meeting, but we also want to recognize her during American Education Week, and that'd be Angel Lasher from WT Griggs. Thank you. There we go. Now we'll get crowded in for a picture. Sure. Thank you. Get our teachers? Thank you, Teacher Assistance. And Angel, can we get you in now, too? We'll do teacher. All right, Mr. Wright, you're a little tall for the front. You've heard that before. Stand behind this balloon.
It was working for God.
I know, you've got to tell him. Is everybody smiling? One more. Large group. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations once again to all our winners. Now, we will have Town Bank and One Book, One District Project, Sandy Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent, Taylor Sugg, Regional President, and Teresa Dozier, Branch Manager, Town Bank.
Thank you. Before we bring all of our guests here this evening, I'd like to kind of set the stage for what's brought us to this point. One School, One Book is a program that's designed to create a shared reading experience within a single elementary school community. A chapter book is chosen, every student receives a copy, and every family reads the book at home over the course of a couple of weeks. During that time period, activities are coordinated at the school, and it helps to promote the enrich, and enrich the reading experience that's shared across all grade levels and with the family members as well. We've had several presentations to the board about this program and its success. Jarvisburg Elementary School began this One Book, One School reading initiative in the district and shared their success with others. Because of that, we finally have six schools that are participating in One School, One Book program. And so we moved away from it just being a single book at a single school to One Book, One District. And that concept began last spring when the book, The World According to Humphrey, was read by everyone in the district at the elementary level. So as you can imagine, purchasing eighteen hundred copies of a single book to be a shared reading experience, it can be quite expensive, but worth the investment. Last year, we were fortunate to receive a donation from the Dominion Power that assisted us in purchasing the books for our Humphrey Read. Believing strongly in the benefits of this program for the family and the community, Steve Blackstock, Principal at Jarvisburg, began seeking out sponsors because he was determined to have these books for a One District, One Book project, One Book, One District project. So I'd like to have him come up. He doesn't know this, but he's going to come up with me right now, be a part of this. In September, Mr. Blackstock and I met with Teresa Dozier of Town Bank, and we discussed, really, it was our pitch, we pitched, and we pitched hard, the project, and hopes that we would be able to be a beneficiary of the generous support that Town Bank has provided to many different organizations in our community. So we are pleased to have with us tonight Ms. Teresa Dozier, manager of Town Bank, Currituck and Moyac, and the Regional President of Town Bank, Mr. Taylor Sugg, and they have a very special presentation for us. With that, I am going to step aside.
So with that, we are pleased to present to you on behalf of Town Bank and its Board of Directors, a check for $4,500 to get this program started this year, and, you know, I will help be part of the kickoff at some particular school. So we're excited.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Sugg, Ms. Dozier, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And we appreciate Town Bank's active participation in many community activities. That's wonderful. Thanks again.
Thank you so much. Our plan is to go ahead and purchase books so that we can start the book read across the district in February, and we have lots of plans to bring them in to help read with students, and we have some media ideas that we might post questions on our Facebook page or get the news, the radio stations to have some discussions. But we want to go big, because we found just by accident, we involved a lot of our community partners and business owners in the discussion, and they went out and bought their own books. So we want to make sure we get them out there and really make this a big community read. So we're excited. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Meekins, are you going to make another video this year like you did with Humphrey?
They saw that one.
Okay. Next, we'll have our student board member reports. Katie Trailer and Mary Kate Morgan from Currituck County High School, Alexandra Carter and Katie Phillips from Napp Early College. Katie?
Good evening, y'all. Tonight, I will be reporting on Shawboro Elementary School, Currituck County Middle School, and Currituck County High School. Shawboro Elementary School, their November news is Miles Henderson also visited Shawboro Elementary School's fifth-grade classes. Students were excited and learned a lot relating to weather instruments and forecasting the weather. On October 30th, Shawboro had their first dinner, PTA, talent show for students in kindergarten through third grade. Kindergarten students are enjoying swimming lessons at the YMCA. Kindergarten students also enjoyed their field trip to Morris Farms. Barbara Snowden, our local historian, visited fourth-grade students to share information of the landmarks of Currituck and the state. Lori Meads from the Museum of the Albemarle will also be visiting fourth-grade students on Friday morning. Students celebrated Bus Safety Week and Red Ribbon Week. Shawboro is having their first book fair this week. Pitcher retakes are tomorrow, Friday, November 7th. Third-grade students will be going to the Chesapeake Planetarium this month. Fifth-grade students will go to Jamestown this month as well. Awards assemblies will take place on November 18th. A Veterans Day assembly will be presented by fifth-grade students on November 25th at 1:10. All veterans are invited to attend. Currituck County Middle School, announcements for November? The Rockin Raiders Chorus raised over $1,000 for kids, Currituck kids, at their benefit concert October 16th during our Red Ribbon Week. The Currituck County Middle School soccer team remained undefeated during their regular season. The sixth, seventh, and The sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students visited Whalehead, the Wildlife Center at Corolla Lighthouse this month. It was a wonderful field trip as many students faced their fear of heights as they ventured up to the top of the lighthouse. The book fair is this week, November 3rd through the 7th. Currituck County Middle School is celebrating our veterans on Friday, November 7th at 9:00. The chorus and band will be performing as well as guest speaker in the auditorium. Any local veterans are invited to attend as we celebrate you for your service to our country. Currituck Middle will have their second dance this year with a blast from the past on Friday, November 14th from 6:00 to 8:00. Currituck County High School. Their fall play, Reckless, is going to be November 21st through the 23rd, and that's at the Currituck County Middle School. The SAT will also be held at Currituck County High School at 7:30 this Saturday. Currituck County High School Athletics, the first basketball game will be November 21st, and that is at First Flight High School. And there is no school on November 11th. That's now to Mary Kate.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to share with you a little bit tonight about what Moayok Elementary School is up to. Our fifth graders and Ms. Hughes's class collected nearly 700 pairs of socks for their Socktober event, inspired by the Kid Presidents Challenge. Red Ribbon Week was a great event, and they collected nine boxes of food to donate to the Food Bank of Currituck County. They also had a great turnout for the PTA Fall Festival on October 24th. And kindergarten and first-grade students had a blast during their Letterland Costume Parade and celebrated that on October 30th. Upcoming events include Awards Day on November 10th, PTA Movie Night on November 14th, and Student of the Month Luncheon on November 21st. I'm also going to share with you what Central Elementary is doing, and Central is excited to be hosting their annual Veterans Day Museum Luncheon and Program on Friday, November 7th. Displayed on our walls are 1,311 red, white, and blue stars. Students brought in names of veterans and active military personnel, and one star has each of those names on them. Meaning, one star individually has a name. Not one whole star. Let's see. They far exceeded their goal of 1,000 names. Our museum will open to the media, will be open in the Media Center during lunch and will be followed by a program at 1:15. We welcome veterans and active military to join us for lunch, our program, and to visit the museum. They are also in full swing with their Night of a Thousand Stars activities. Our hallways have golden stars hanging each representing the books that their students have read. We will be hosting a Night of a Thousand Stars, Enchanted Forest Family Reading Night on November 19th at 6:30. Students will come out and their families dressed as their favorite storybook character and spending time reading together. Also, on December 9th, we will have a tree lighting ceremony, and each of the lights on the tree will represent one book that each child has read. The CCMS chorus will sing at the tree lighting, and they will also be doing a Chick-fil-A fundraiser. So, please come out, have dinner, and watch our courtyard turn into a beautiful light display. Student recognition assemblies will be held on November 13th, K through 2 at 1:00 p.m. and 3 through 5 at 1:45 p.m. I'm also going to share with you what Griggs is up to. And Griggs participated in Red Ribbon Week, October 20th through 24th, with Spirit Days, contests, and a visit from the Sheriff's Department. They also had a visit from the local Fire Department during October for Fire Prevention Month. Their kindergarten students enjoyed their visit to Morris Farm Market. Third graders took a trip to the Planetarium, and fourth and fifth-grade students enjoyed the play Peter Pan presented by Albemarle Performing Arts Center at the College of the Albemarle. Second-grade students were learning about community workers, and several visitors from the community came into their classrooms. And our first-grade students had a blast dissecting owl pellets and writing about their experiment, about their experience. Our first nine-weeks assembly will be held on November 13th, and we will have K through 2 and 3 through 5 presentation. We will also be hosting a holiday luncheon and Veterans Day Program on November 19th. So, those three schools definitely had a lot going on this month. And I also kind of want to share a countywide update. This is more personal for me, but many of the schools have participated in the North Carolina Kids Walk for Kids with Cancer, which was held on October 25th. So, that was two weekends ago. And I'm pleased to say that a collective effort, we raised almost $24,000 for childhood cancer research. Very close to our goal of $100,000 over the last five years. So, we're just a little ways away from it, and so, we're hoping that by the end of collecting all the money, that we will reach our goal. So, we're very excited. And I wanted to thank the board for allowing us to use the schools as an outlet because that's where a lot of our fundraising is being held. And it's just really awesome to see kids my age and younger really just want to help out the community and help those that aren't as lucky as them. And so, it's just really an inspiring thing to see. So, thank you, guys.
Can I ask you a question? I think you said 100% of the proceeds goes to the children.
Yes, ma'am. 100% of the proceeds we raise goes to childhood cancer research at Memorial Sloan Kettering Cancer Center in New York City, which is the oldest and largest cancer center in the United States and does a lot with the research.
That's wonderful because I had gotten a call today asking for a donation, and I asked how much would go to the cancer center? And they said 60%. So, the organization was taking 40%.
Right.
And so, if you love to donate, please do. 100% of it goes to the cause, and I think it's a great thing that you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's not just me. Like I said, it's a huge community effort, and I wouldn't be able to do it without the support of the board and just the community in general. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kate.
Hello. Tonight, I'm acting for two people. I am Alexandra and Katie. So, I think that's pretty awesome. But Katie is actually attending our JP NAP Beta Club induction tonight. I'm really hoping the fire truck that went by is not going to JP NAP because they were holding candles earlier. So, but I'm sure they're safe because we have great supervisors that are standing there. And there were a lot of children that showed up to the Beta Induction, which is very exciting. It's just a great way to start the year and to get everyone involved, and I know they have some really big plans for what they want to do for the community and the JP NAP students as a whole. I have the privilege of not introducing, but talking about Jarvisburg Elementary School and the great things they've been up to over the past month and the things they're looking forward to. Jarvisburg Elementary was host to members of the lower Currituck Fire Department, who helped them celebrate Fire Prevention Month. And also, staff from the Currituck County Sheriff's Department, who participated in Red Ribbon Week. Their fourth and fifth-grade students attended a superb performance of Peter Pan at COA in Elizabeth City. And I actually was there the day they performed it, and the parking lot was, oh my goodness, so chaotic. Full buses everywhere. So, I know it was absolutely amazing because they came every day of the performance. That was awesome. This month, Jarvisburg will honor the veterans with a special program on November 14th, and they're inviting families to join them for their Thanksgiving Feast on November 19th. Also, tomorrow are the recognition ceremonies for the different grades. Knott's Island Elementary School has also been busy. They are having their Fall Festival this Saturday, November 8th from 11 to 2, and admission is free, which is awesome because if you're like me, who's broke, totally coming. But there will be games, hayrides, and food items for sale. Also, the entire school will take a field trip on Monday, November 10th, to the Virginia Aquarium to visit and participate in various educational programs that the aquarium offers, which is awesome because the aquarium is a fun place to go. Yeah, sorry, Moayok Middle School. I just lost my train of thought. Moayok Middle School has also been busy. They celebrated a successful Red Ribbon Week, October 27th through the 31st. They also made a Shake It Off video. That's all they left it at. They didn't explain anything else. So, I think that's worth a checking out.
They sent it to us. It was cute.
Red Ribbon Week Video 2014. And the MMS Golf Team won its second straight conference tournament title. What's better than going back to back, you ask? Winning your fourth straight volleyball conference tournament title. So, they've been incredibly successful in their athletic programs, and congratulations to those teams. Their book fair is from November 3rd to the 10th, and the Fall Sports Awards, which are needed because we have amazing athletes at Moayok Middle School and in all the schools, will be on November the 13th. For JP NAP, Home Sweet Home, October 27th through the 31st was the SAD Clubs Red Ribbon Week. Club members, with the help of Ms. Etheridge, planted 1,000 red tulips around campus. I want to say thank you for your expertise, Mrs. Etheridge. The tulips and gardening tools were donated by Home Depot, and they can't wait for spring. They're going to be so beautiful. On Veterans Day, our grounds will also be decorated with flags to recognize veterans that are connected to the JP NAP students and community. And so, if you pass our school on that day, you'll see flags all over the place representing those who are fighting for our country and have fought and who we are truly grateful for. JP NAP is proud to announce that they will be receiving a new display case in their Media Center to house artifacts and memorable. That one. Memorabilia belonging to Mr. NAP himself. And they also want to say thanks to everyone who voted on Tuesday, November 4th. And congrats to Ms. Britton for JP NAP's Teacher of the Year. We're super excited for her. She taught me how to dissect a pig. That's awesome. We also want to note that SGO raised $200 for breast cancer over their Spirit Week, which was really, really awesome. It was a fun thing for the grades to come together and to raise money. And we had a very successful month recognizing, bringing awareness to breast cancer. Our teacher, Ms. Durham, is going through breast cancer, and so, it was nice to show her how much we support her and to let her know that we're going to be with her through everything because that's just how Spartans are. So, thank you so much, and have a fantastic month.
Thank you all. Okay, next item, field trip request. Ms. Osman?
Yes, good evening. There will be a Veterinary Science Career Development Event in Sanford, North Carolina, November 7th and 8th, and that's Currituck County High School students. Currituck County High Schools and JP NAP students will be traveling together to a State SAD Conference in Raleigh, November 21st through the 23rd.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion in seconds. Is there any discussion on either of these field trip requests? Okay, since there's no discussion, all in favor? Motion passes. Next, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Nobody signed up for the public comment session, so we'll skip that. Next, information items. The next board work session will be Wednesday, December 10th, 2014, at the NAP Professional Learning Center at 4 o'clock. Next board of education meeting will be Wednesday, December 10th, 2014, at the historic Currituck Courthouse at 6:30. That's right here. We will be visiting, like I said earlier, Jarvisburg, Griggs, and Shawboro on the 10th prior to the work session and board meeting. And next, I would like Ms. Osman to tell everyone about the good news that we recently received about transportation.
Yes, we got the news this week that our Transportation Department and the whole department has received a rating of 100% efficiency, which is wonderful for us. The higher the rating from the state, the better off our state monetary funding is from transportation. So, they're to be congratulated. All the bus drivers, our transportation, bus garage, our coordinators are to be congratulated. Oftentimes, that also means that they have to work really hard. The bus routes may be longer. The buses may be a little more crowded, but monetarily, that greatly benefits our school system. And with that 100% efficiency rating, our funding was increased by about $170,000. So, we're proud of them.
Thank you. And we were also told there's probably only one or possibly two districts in the state that has a 100% efficiency rating for transportation, and we are one of the two. Okay, next, board member comments. I'll start with Ms. Kraft.
I visited all of our schools this month. Went to Moayok Elementary School to do STEM volunteer. I think I learned more than the kids did from me. I learned more from them. They're doing lots of robotic things, so I wasn't really good at that, but I had fun anyway. Jarvisburg Elementary, went there just in time to get Dominic, and I'm on the, I have to go home tonight and read Chapter 6 to see how Bartholomew Badger is going to be feeling. Went to volleyball games at Currituck County High School and Moayok Middle School. Saw the chorus at Currituck County Middle School. Went to the talent show at Shawboro Elementary School. Central Elementary, I actually watched Mr. Baldwin. I don't think he knew I was watching him, but I watched Mr. Baldwin in the action-based learning, doing some of the floor exercises. The kids were having an amazing time, so it was really good. Visited with Griggs. Went to Knott's Island. Just a great, we just have great schools.
Thank you. Ms. Caddis?
I attended the Knott's Island Elementary Family, or Family Reading Night that followed up their book fair. Had a blast, learned a lot of facts about the medieval times that they had all over the tables. Pretty interesting. I also attended the Moayok Middle National Junior Beta Society Club Induction. There were about 40 kids inducted that evening. It was really nice to see all of the kids out there along with their parents cheering them on and seeing them get involved. And really, something that I want to talk about tonight that I'm going to stress, and I know most everybody that was in the work session already heard me vent about this. I was driving to our work session this evening and was behind one of our school buses, one of our high school buses, dropping their kids off for the afternoon route. I watched four of our community members drive right through these stop signs when the buses were stopped, letting our kids off. Four separate cars on four separate events, going right down 168, blew by our buses as our kids were getting off the bus. Please take these warning signs, the flashing lights, the signs, very seriously. One of our kids is going to be, ending up being injured, and that is, it's just not fair. That's what those buses are out there for. Those bus drivers are working very hard to keep those kids safe, and we need the community support and participation to follow the rules of the road, please. I was very upset to see that. So, I just stress safety, keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Dobney and Mr. Simmons on your reelection. Looking forward to working with you for the next four years. Again, one of our student board members, Katie, was inducted into the Beta Club at JP NAP. Very proud of her and proud of all these young ladies that sit on the board with us. I was able to go to NAP and plant those tulips, and I can't wait to see them come up. And what the tulip planting represents, the SAD Club is Students Against Destructive Decisions. And to see the turnout of these young students that are enthusiastic about making these commitments and promises of how they're going to turn around and make some positive changes. It may be they're not going to text and drive, not going to drink. They're going to be more mindful of other students. If they've bullied in the past, they're going to stop that. So, the tulip planting represented that promise or that commitment. So, when they planted the tulip, they're making that promise, and in the spring, when that tulip comes up, it's a reminder of that promise that they made this fall, that hopefully they're staying on track and keeping that promise. So, I enjoyed that very much, but gardening is kind of my therapy. So, I love anything having to do with gardening. I want to wish everyone, oh, I want to thank Home Depot. My goodness, they donated 1,000 bulbs, and they were out there that day, and they were helping us plant them. So, a big shout out to Home Depot. Thanksgiving's coming up. Thanksgiving's coming up. Can't believe it. The end of this month. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy being with your family and your loved ones, your friends. Take the time to enjoy that day. Don't worry about the sales. They'll be there. They're going to be there. You don't think they are, but they'll be there. Just enjoy that time together and have a safe Thanksgiving and a happy one. And thank you very much.
Mr. Simmons?
Well, I had a chance to go to Moayoc Elementary School to Mrs. Rose's library and watch some of the neat stuff. Ms. Craft saw it too, the neat stuff they're doing at Moayoc Elementary School. It's that time of year that our football season is coming to an end, and I've had a chance to, every Friday night or Thursday night, go see our Currituck kids play. It's really been an exciting year. Last week, the boys at our high school had like an intermule volleyball game. They raised, I think, five hundred and ten dollars for cancer research. These are kids who just got together and decided they wanted to raise some money, so I was really proud to see that. I went to the chorus concert that Kyle Cook, our chorus teacher at Currituck Middle School, put on, and anybody who was there was amazed. It was standing room only. That's how many parents came to see the concert, and I would love to see chorus full-time, you know, in all of our schools. Next, I really want to say thank you to the boosters clubs and all the parents and people who have volunteered for our Fall Sports. When you went to a football game, if you looked over there, there were parents running our concession stands. All these are volunteers, and they've done it to raise money for our kids in our county for scholarships and to just do things for their kids in our county. And I want to say thank you to all those parents. Last but not least, I want to say thank you to everybody in the Currituck County who put Dr. Dobney and myself and Ms. Etheridge back on this board and have trusted us with four more years. Thank you.
Okay, since the last board meeting, I've visited Griggs Elementary. I went to two Varsity football games. I went to the middle school music concert that Mr. Simmons mentioned, and that was just incredible, absolutely incredible. I also went to the Currituck County Middle School and Moayoc Middle School football game, and you wouldn't say it was an offensive battle. It ended up two to nothing. It was won by a safety. And the eleventh, please remember our veterans. I personally have a daughter that's been in the Air Force and has been in harm's way a few times. I also have friends that I graduated with that did not make it back from Vietnam that gave their life for our country. And would also like to wish everyone a safe, happy, healthy Thanksgiving. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
It's been back.